Good morning, everyone. My name is TJ Mitchell. I'm the acting chairman today. You're stuck with me. Luke Slasher's not here. So we'll gavel in this meeting of the Maricopa County Planning and Zoning Commission at 9:30 a.m. If everyone could join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. If we could have a roll call.
Chairman Slasher. Vice Chair Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Arnett. Commissioner Dan Zeison.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Lindblom.
Here.
Commissioner McGee.
Here.
Commissioner Montoya.
Here.
Commissioner Swart.
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you, Rosalie. A couple of announcements to get started. This meeting has been noticed in accordance with open meeting law, ARS Section 38-431. Agendas are available within 24 hours of each meeting in the Maricopa County Planning and Development Office, and are also available on the Planning and Development website one week prior to hearing at www.mericopa.gov/Planning. Staff reports prepared for each agenda item shall become a part of the permanent record for each case. With respect to the hearing process, cases will be considered in the order in which they appear on the agenda, unless otherwise agreed to by the commission. For each case, the applicant will be given a set amount of time to present. Anyone wishing to speak on a particular case shall fill out a speaker's card for in-person attendance. We already have some of those folks. If there's anyone else that wishes to speak, please come see Rosalie and they can, you can fill out the speaker's card. Or if you're joining us via the GoToWebinar, you can raise your hand. The amount of time allowed for speaking shall be at the discretion of the commission chair. Staff will provide the chairman with the names of persons who have registered and noted desire to comment, and those registered participants who have raised their hand. The chairman will call on each named participant one at a time. Chairman will conduct the hybrid in-person virtual public hearing according to the bylaws and according to the rules established by the chairman regarding public comment. Votes will be done by roll call, though only. The chairman will verbally identify the specific members responsible for all motions and seconds. Now, related to the minutes for the December 8th, 2022, January 12th, 2023, and January 26th, 2023, minutes for those meetings. Any comments from the commission? Okay, if no comments, then those minutes are approved. Darren or staff, if we could present the items on the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have three items on consent. ARS 2020-021, known as Luke Landing 2 in District 4. It's a preliminary plat for 18 lots in the R5, R E P D zoning district, on four acres north of the northwest corner of Glendale and 127th Avenue. There's no known opposition in Paragraph 11. The recommendation is for approval, subject to conditions A through J. Second item is Z 2021-132, known as the Sprague Property SUP in District 3. It's a special use permit for interim industrial use in the form of a light truck repair and storage facility, 4.7 acres south of the southwest corner of 117th, I'm sorry, of I-17 and the New River Road interchange. There is no known opposition. The recommendation is for approval, subject to conditions A through J, Paragraph 15. And then the final consent item is Z 2022-189, known as Safe Store Self-Storage in District 4. This is a zone change to C2 CUPD for 2.2 acre site at the northeast corner of Wigone Creek Boulevard and Camelback Road. There's no known opposition, and the recommendation in Paragraph 12 is for approval, subject to conditions A through F. That concludes the consent. I'm happy to try and answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Darren. We're just trying to figure out the, to get the slides on the.
I think if you touch the corner.
In the meantime, do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff related to those consent agenda items? Okay, is there anyone from the public interest in speaking on any of those agenda items? Okay. And Rachel, is there anybody? Is there anybody on the webinar wishing to speak on those, if you know?
Chairman, we do not have anybody registered to speak on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we'll close the public forum for those. Are there any questions from the commission? Or any comments about any of those items? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda item.
Commissioner Lindblom will make a motion to approve the items on consent agenda as presented by staff.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lindblom. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Swart, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda by Commissioner Lindblom, and a second by Commissioner Swart. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Dan Zeison.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Lindblom.
Yes.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya.
Yes.
Commissioner Swart.
Yes.
Chairman Mitchell.
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to the regular agenda. If we could have presentation of agenda items number four and number five by staff.
Thank you, Chairman. CPA 2022-014 and Z 2021-105, the Elliott Corner Commercial. The subject parcel is approximately 7.45 acres and is located on the southwest corner of Toot Hill Road and Elliott Road in the Buckeye and Goodyear area. Next slide, please. The site is located within the Rainbow Valley area plan as well as the El Real Scenic Corridor. Next slide, please. The current land use designation is large lot residential, and the current zoning is R135. The applicant's first request is a change in land use designation to neighborhood commercial. Second, the applicant is proposing a zone change to C1 CUPD. Next slide, please. The applicant had initially proposed C2 zoning on the site, which staff was not supportive at the time. Upon working with staff, the applicant has revised the zone change request to C1 CUPD with the intent of the overlay to limit uses not compatible with onsite septic. There are a total of 257 known in opposition to the proposal, with 13 individual emails, 244 signatures, and an opposition petition. Staff notes that only two of these emails have been received after the applicant revised the request to C1 CUPD rather than C2. Staff applauds the efforts made by the applicant to bring the request more in line with the Rainbow Valley area plan, which does not offer a land use more intense than neighborhood commercial. Staff does have some remaining concerns about the potential for commercial development to bring increased off-road activity to the area, which would produce increased noise, light, and dust pollution to the area residents. This is already an issue in the Rainbow Valley area, and the Rainbow Valley area plan speaks extensively on the need to mitigate impacts due to off-road activity. Concern over off-road activity was also mentioned in opposition emails. There is also some concern with commercial development south of the Gila River since there is already undeveloped land designated for commercial development in the Rainbow Valley area plan along MC 85. Nonetheless, staff feels comfortable with the proposal, given the conditions that have been worked out with the applicant. The most notable is the building area for each individual building will be limited to 20,000 square feet, and the overall building area on site will be limited to 70,000 square feet. Staff feels this will mitigate and eliminate the potential for Big Macs development and strip mall-style commercial development on site, both of which are strongly discouraged in the Rainbow Valley area plan. Additionally, the request seems appropriate, given the site's location and the corner of an arterial intersection. Staff recommends approval of CPA 2022-014, as well as approval of Z 2021-115, subject to conditions A through H. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Joseph. Does anyone from the commission have any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner McGee.
Yes, Commissioner McGee.
Could staff further address the off-road issue, off-road issues in the area and potential for mitigation, so I better understand them?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McGee, this is Darren. I'll try and answer your question, and Joseph can jump in when I go awry. The general area along the Gila, east and west of Australia Mountain Park, has a tremendous amount of off-road activity. And this is from the local communities. You can actually see sand rails that are licensed for the street, entering the river, exiting the river, and going to nearby businesses. There's a Circle K at Avondale Boulevard and Southern that is highly frequented by off-road vehicles. Up and down Avondale Boulevard, you'll see these off-road vehicles driving down the road. It is quite likely that the presence of commercial, especially if it's convenience retail, will attract these off-road vehicles, you know, as they take breaks from their activities in the river. But the paving and the controlled access via driveways will work to mitigate dust created on-site. I must speak to, defer to the applicant if there's other, if there's other measures that are being taken. But the off-road activity in the river will remain unless it becomes a law enforcement issue or a landowner issue that is off-site from the commercial taking place.
Mr. Chairman, just quick follow-up.
Of course.
And thank you, that very much clarifies. Is there a governing body who's within whose jurisdiction the off-road activity lies? It's not the Planning and Zoning Commission, correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McGee, that's correct. A portion, a big, a big portion of it's going to be City of Avondale, and some may be City of Goodyear. There's also Flood Control District in Maricopa County. Mostly, the county would be Flood Control District. I don't know if there's any federal jurisdiction in this area, but there is the Flood Control District and City of Avondale and City of Goodyear that would have river property.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Swart.
I'd like to just make another possible recommendation. I think that Commissioner McGee brought up a great point of mitigation, which is really, in part, a law enforcement job. If it's Avondale that has disposition, all the owner has to do until they're under construction is post that property with ARS 131502A1, which is notifying them and making a reasonable request under Arizona law to not enter that property. And so that will assist the Avondale Police, where they will have them sign an affidavit that'll be on their mobile data computers. When they see these off-road vehicles there, they can immediately take enforcement action. Then, when it's built, as you said very eloquently, that will mitigate the dust and the other things that if they did pull in and they have a licensed vehicle, it's just like a car. You can't, you know, do any enforcement for someone to come to a retail establishment if they're in a licensed vehicle. So I think that's an idea to suggest. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I should clarify. City of Avondale jurisdiction would be on the east side of 143rd, it's a couple miles from here.
Okay.
But there may be some City of Goodyear jurisdiction. There's certainly Flood Control jurisdiction. But the comment from Commissioner Swart still applies regarding the statute.
Thank you.
Understood. Thank you, Commissioner Swart. Any other questions for staff from the commission? I just have a quick clarifying question, Joseph. You mentioned that the vast majority, except for two or three of the public opposition, was prior to the revision of the request. Is that when they were requesting C2?
Chairman, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any final questions for staff from the commission? Okay, at this point, if the applicant is on the call or in person here, I'd like to ask them to come and present the case if they would like. Please provide your name for the records, sir.
The applicant is present, and delightfully so. It's been a long time since I've been able to physically attend these meetings. This is quite refreshing. My name is Paul Gilbert. The address is 701 North 44th Street, and I represent the owner of the property. Who is going to be doing the slides for me? Oh, there you are. Okay, good. Would you skip forward to, let's get the next slide? Next slide. See, I'm saving time already. Okay. This site is within the Rainbow Valley area plan. It's just south of the Gila River corridor and strategically located at the intersection of two arterial streets. You will hear me say perhaps ad nauseam in the course of this presentation, "two arterial streets." This is simply put, not an appropriate place for residential. This is an appropriate place for commercial, as we will develop further as we go along. Toot Hill Road is the primary north-south spine through the Rainbow Valley area, and is the only roadway, I want to emphasize that. It's the only roadway in Rainbow Valley that crosses the Gila River into the city of Buckeye to the north. So this is a major traffic street. Secondly, Elliott Road, which is the other cross-street, is the main east-west thoroughfare that connects Rainbow Valley Road to the city of Goodyear. So you have the two roads that connect the whole area, right crossing and at the intersection of this property. I could not think of a better location for a commercial development than these two, than the intersection of these two roads. So, here is the key, and I think the most important part of my presentation. Most Rainbow Valley residents will regularly pass this intersection as they travel in and out of Rainbow Valley, and as they travel to the city of Goodyear and the city of Buckeye. The bottom line is, traffic is there, and it's going to simply increase. One of the major postulates of the opposition is that they're worried about the traffic. I think it's pretty obvious, as the staff report also makes clear, and we're here with a recommendation of approval from the staff. The traffic is already there. We're not really going to add to it. So I think that's a very important point. The site itself is about a, next slide, please. Thanks, Kurt. Kurt, why don't you go over there and tell her? I get so carried away with my presentation, I forget to move the slides. I can't chew gum and walk at the same time, so thank you, Kurt, for helping me out. All right, as you can see from this slide, the site is a 7.5 acre undeveloped property. Adjacent to the site to the north and east is undeveloped state trust land. To the south is the Dollar General. We need to talk about that Dollar General store. That was also my case, although I came on board late. The Dollar General store is built and is doing a great business. The history of that dollar store, I submit, is very informative as we read together to focus on this application. The Planning Commission voted to deny that general store, dollar store. I'm happy to say I didn't present it before the commission. I'd like to think if I did, maybe the result would have been different, but who knows? Fact is, the commission on a split vote, my memory is it was three to four, voted to deny it. I came in on the case, went to the Board of Supervisors, and the Board of Supervisors voted unanimously, unanimously to reject the recommendation of the Planning Commission and the staff, and voted to approve the Dollar General store at that location. It's important to note that Commissioner Gallardo, in whose district the property is located, voted in favor of that Dollar General store. So the proposal before you today, and by the way, the Dollar Store opened in 2019, and it's been a huge success, further vindicating, this is a pretty good site for commercial. Importantly, one of the primary reasons the Planning Commission used to deny that case was that the property for the Dollar Store was not on the immediate corner. You see, it was at the end, south end of the property. What we're proposing now is commercial at the immediate corner. Furthermore, the Dollar Store was C2 at the recommendation of the staff, and frankly, a little arm twisting by the staff. We reduced this application to C1. So we are a different, in a different posture than we were when the Dollar Store came before you with C2. So as you can see from the aerial captured at the end of 2021, there are several street vendors that regularly use the undeveloped land surrounding this Toot Hill and Elliott intersection. Despite the property owner who was here today, rather tenacious efforts to remove these street vendors, he's posted signs, he's done everything. They just keep coming there. Now, I hate, or I am reticent to use an illegal use as a justification for commercial, but if you ever wanted one, the fact that these vendors continue to come month after month after month, again vindicates that this must be a pretty good site for commercial uses. Furthermore, who frequents these commercial uses? Residents of Rainbow Valley. And they wouldn't be there if the residents weren't, weren't frequenting these businesses. Again, I think a rather cogent vindication of the fact that this is a pretty good place for commercial operations. Next slide, please. I don't want to dwell too much on these vendors, but we took some photos just for your edification. These photos were taken about a year apart, and they show several street vendors at this intersection. At least three vendors on this site were most recently there in May of 2022, and additional vendors keep coming. In fact, these photos show that the same Rainbow Valley Tacos food truck has been coming back to this intersection for over a year, despite the fact that the property is posted. So we have done our part to not encourage this illegal use, but they keep coming. That's a long way to drive, to kick them off every week. And we've tried, but they're persistent group. But again, I think they vindicate the fact that this is a good site for commercial, and the fact that the Rainbow Valley residents continue to patronize them. Next slide, please. So what we are proposing today is to legalize the commerce on the subject property by rezoning the property from R135 to C1 CUPD. That will allow retail commercial on the property. The site is really not appropriate for single-family residential, which is the current use on the property. You will note that the, that single-family has developed around the property, but this property has never developed as single-family, again showing and demonstrating empirically the fact that this is not a good site for single-family residential at the intersection of two of the most busiest roads in the immediate area. No reasonable family, I submit, wants to build a home in such close proximity to a highly trafficked intersection like Elliott and Toot Hill. The other point I want to make, and I appreciated Joseph pointing this out in his report. We have worked for over a year with the staff to change this application, to bring it in conformity where the staff feels comfortable supporting it. And we, we are of the honest opinion that the staff has actually improved the, the project, and we're grateful for their suggestions. We think what we've worked out with the staff is a very good compromise, which makes commercial at this corner and the amendment of the Rainbow Valley plan even more worthwhile. So we worked with the staff prodigiously. We changed the application from C2 to C1. Dollar Store is C2. We agreed to do a CUPD. We did the CUPD so the staff could have the legal authority to restrict uses on the property. And then concomitantly with the CUP, we also agreed with the staff to a list of uses that can't go on the property until sewer is available. Sewer is not available right now. Water is. We have a commitment, as the staff indicated in their report, for water for the property. The Dollar Store is operating on a septic tank. But we've agreed to restrict the uses. All of them are enumerated in the staff report, and incidentally, we are in 100% agreement with the staff stipulations. So I just want to verify that we've done our best to make this a palatable application by working closely with the staff. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, the site in subject is within the Rainbow Valley area plan. We're seeking to amend that plan. It's the second part of our application here. So the site is currently designated lot, large lot residential. We want to amend the land use map from large lot residential to commercial neighborhood retail, consistent with this zoning request. Now, we can't do that without a discussion, and I pardon that this, half of this presentation's going on a little long. I'm acclimating to being paid by the word, so I keep this thing going here. But throughout the entire Rainbow Valley area plan, there is only one small portion in the entire Rainbow Valley plan that's designated for commercial. Now, that area is located north of the Gila River and at the intersection of Jack Rabbit Trail and MC 85. How has that property developed? It hasn't. So the only commercial development allowed in the Rainbow Area Plan is this piece of property. But it's not a good piece of property. It doesn't have the same street pattern, same traffic pattern that we have on our site. So furthermore, this area, which is designated for commercial, and remember, this plan is 30 years old, still hasn't developed. This area is severely disconnected from the majority of the Rainbow Valley residents. That's why it hasn't developed. It was not then, and not now, a good site for commercial. So as you can see from the land use map, the intersection of Jack Rabbit and MC 85 is surrounded by open space and rural residential areas. Additionally, the local street vendors haven't found that as a suitable place. And again, I know I'm emphasizing our friends, the taco vendors, too much perhaps, but they, they don't go up there, because they recognize that's not a good place for commercial. They come to our site. So the subject site is far more suitable to provide retail service. They come to our site. So the subject site is far more suitable to provide retail service for the Rainbow Valley community. Again, it's located closer in proximity to the majority of the Rainbow Valley residents. It's located upon the two, adjacent to the two primary arterials throughout the community. More convenient and accessible for most Rainbow Valley residents. You can ask for a better vindication of that than the Dollar Store. When that application came before you, the neighbors, many of them claimed, well, that will never go. Nobody will ever shop there. That's doing a booming business. Done well since it opened. Now, let's talk about the plan itself. The fact is, the area plan has not been amended or updated for 20 years. I pointed that out to Mr. Ellsworth and Mr. Gerard and they agreed that maybe it was time to take another look, but that would be presumptuous of me to suggest that to you, but it hasn't been updated in 20 years. That is despite the fact that the plan says it's supposed to be regularly updated every 10 years. Now, there was a period of time when the plan was updated. We did a little research on this and there were updates in 1988, 1990 and 1992, and then again in 2003. Since 2003 and now, 2023, 20 years, there have been no updates. We submit that this amendment is clearly a needed update to the plan and is consistent with the recommendation of the plan itself. Obviously, the area has changed dramatically in the last 20 years and that's simply not reflected in the current adopted Rainbow Valley Area Plan. And there's, there's an interesting quote in the Rainbow Valley Area Plan that I think weighs heavily on this application. And again, provides confirmation on why it needs to be amended. The plan itself says it's only to last 10 to 15 years. It's been 20 years since it's even been looked at or amended. So the plan is really outdated and what we're proposing is consistent with the plan. Next slide, please. So I want to point out to you why this is consistent with the plan, even though we are amending the plan. The plan that we're proposing is consistent with the goals and policies of the Rainbow Valley Area Plan. Although the future land use map only indicates one commercial designation, I reviewed that with you earlier. The plan recognizes that there may be additional commercial nodes. Now, it says there could be additional commercial nodes and let's focus on where the plan says it ought to go. I'll relieve you of the suspense. It just happens to point to the very area I'm proposing here. Let's look at the details. It says that there can be additional commercial, but it needs to be south of the Heela River. We are, and it needs to only be at the intersection of two major arterial streets. We've already talked about Tuthill and Elliott being the two major streets. So we qualify exactly and match the description that the Rainbow Valley Area Plan says, if we're going to have more commercial, this is the standard you should use. We're using it. So there are also some economic development goals of the plan that we're consistent with. I'm not going to go through those. And let me wrap up by addressing the neighborhood concerns. Next slide, please. Oh, you're ahead of me. That's good. Thank you. The two primary concerns we've heard from the community regarding this application are traffic and crime. I'd like to address both of those and reserve the right, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, to elaborate more based on my rebuttal and what is said by the neighborhood opposition, but let's talk about traffic initially. Both Tuthill and Elliott Roads are arterial, arterial streets. Sorry, a lot of pressure up here. Arterial streets and they're not appropriate for residential uses as the site is being used today by the Dollar Store and the taco vendors. In fact, these two streets are the primary two corridors in and out of Rainbow Valley, as I've mentioned before. So the traffic is already there and it's just going to simply increase. That's the main road into Goodyear and into Buckeye. So opposing this case because it will increase traffic, I do not believe is a meritorious claim because the traffic is already there. Next, the uses we're proposing are C one, which are neighborhood commercial uses. So most of the traffic is already going by and they're already be attracted to the neighborhood commercial uses. These uses aren't necessarily uses that will attract additional traffic. Furthermore, we are restricting the scale of the development. Stipulation two C proposed by the staff with which we agree limits the maximum size of any single building to 20,000 square feet and the maximum building area at 70,000 square feet. So we're keeping this a small neighborhood commercial area. Now let's talk about the crime. There are already dozens of local street vendors at the site, none of which, to what we've been able to tell, cause any crime. There have been no empirical data suggesting the crime has increased because of those vendors or as a result of the Dollar Store. But we thought, well, we can make that statement, but is there empirical justification for the claim that we don't increase crime? So we hired a expert, Glenn Wap, who has a PhD and he, we asked him to do a report for us. We submitted a copy of that report to the staff. It didn't make mention in the staff report, but let me just briefly summarize its findings. That analysis found that there was actually less year over year crime between 2019, that's when the Dollar Store started, and 2021, after the Dollar Store was developed. There's no evidence that suggests the Dollar Store increased crime in the Rainbow Valley community. In fact, Mr. Walp's findings suggest that with a mixed use area of residential and commercial, there is a potential that crime can actually be reduced. So the second argument being advanced by the neighbors, we do not think is empirically supported and we submitted a study that indicates that. So let me wrap up in closing. The current use is inappropriate. There's no better location for commercial services than this, conveniently located at two primary arterials throughout the Rainbow Valley community. The Rainbow Valley community already has utilities or already utilizes this site for commerce. Restricting the uses is incompatible with septic systems, so you're not going to have any uses under the C U P D that need septic system. Importantly, once the septic system comes, then we can bring in these uses under those stipulations. We're supported by the Rainbow Valley Area Plan and the Dollar Store was unanimously approved over the recommendation of both staff and the planning commission by the Board of Supervisors. That concludes my presentation. Mr. Chairman and members of the commission will be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gilbert. Commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Montoya.
I have two questions. So my first question is, I'm just interested in knowing, what is the population size of this particular area?
The population? Wow, do we know that, Kurt? We're, we're going to take a quick look at the plan. I'm sorry, Commissioner Montoya, you caught me flat footed. I do not know.
Okay. And, and my, my second question is, in the staff analysis on item eighteen, I'm interested in knowing what type of public information participation process that you use for this particular, I mean, it's a very large, for that area, it's a very large development, given that all they have is a general Dollar Store. So I'm interested in knowing what, what did you do to allow for the public to participate in understanding and knowing about this major project that's coming to their neighborhood that is primarily, from all the looks of it, looks very rural.
Yes, I, I might add, that's why we're asking for C one, which is a local rural zoning category. But we did the same outreach that we used with the Dollar Store and basically we, we mostly concentrated on the people that were in the immediate vicinity and and met all the county requirements for noticing a property adjacent to the site.
Yeah, I, I bring that up because it looks like staff noted that they're alluded to, there should have been a stronger neighborhood participation in this process. And so it, it, from all accounts, from what I'm hearing, or I believe I'm hearing, is that it was very minimal or only what is basically required. And I was asking about that because I recall the General Dollar Store and also the number of neighborhood folks that have come out, that have come out in opposition to this project. Now granted, as, and I believe I heard this correctly, this was prior to the change from the C two to the C one.
That's correct. Now, the petition that has been submitted, by the way, has zip codes from people who live out of state, zip codes from one of the largest areas that includes Reach and Clear Out in the Buckeye. So it was a huge area and we felt the people that really were most affected were the ones that lived in the media vicinity and they're the ones that we contacted. And again, it was the same process we used at the Dollar Store. If we had tried to hold a neighborhood meeting to capture all the people that signed on that petition, Clear Out into Buckeye, we would have, there would have been no end of the people that we would have had to contact. So under the circumstances, because as you noted, it's such a large area, we focused on what we were required to do under the county requirements and that was deemed sufficient when the Board of Supervisors approved the case for the Dollar Store.
Well, it helps to understand that, you know, 250 something signatures seems like a lot for an area that is, looks very rural. So thank you for that explanation, but I'm still a little concerned about the public participation process. Thank you.
Let, can you go with the next slide? May I elaborate on that to Commissioner Montoya and Mr. Chairman?
Please.
As this slide shows, we did a little analysis of that petition. And let me summarize what we found from that petition. First of all, as the chairman pointed out, the petition was circulated while we were still asking for C two. It was before we had placed all the restrictions that the staff asked us to do. So the petition addresses a very different application than what is before you now. So additionally though, that petition was conducted via an online change.org petition that is part of a larger movement on the change.org website that basically was entitled Stop Disrupting Building in Our Community. The 233 signatures on that petition had, let's see, let me follow this up here. Basically, what happened is that you have signatures on that petition from 65 different zip codes, 14 different states and two countries. And it goes clear into Buckeye. So you've got a lot of signatures that really aren't people that are affected by this application. Just for your information.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, follow to Commissioner Montoya's question?
Commissioner McGee, I believe Darren was going to mention something, if you don't mind.
No, not a bit.
Commissioners McGee and Montoya, just a follow up, we, we quickly tried to ascertain the population. The Rachel found a a reference to Rainbow Valley that said 76,000 people, but that obviously included Sierra, Australia Mountain Ranch and incorporated areas. And then we, Tom noted that the census tract that the site is located in, according to the 2020 census, had a population of approximately 6,000.
Okay. Thank you very much, Darren. That's helpful. Commissioner McGee?
Yes, I'm, I'm familiar with these types of petitions and I'm going to go back to the actual process of reaching out to the local community. There was a response from the community related to the original C one or C, the original proposal. Mr. Gilbert, what was the outreach to the community after you heard back from them and after you worked with staff to get to the C one C U P D?
We reached out to the community that was within the notification area required by the ordinance.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, may I continue with two more quick questions?
Of course, please do.
So thank you very much. And Mr. Gilbert, I think it's just one now. I think Commissioner Montoya asked the other one. The city of Buckeye had some concerns with the initial request and then the way I read it, and then they backed off and said, that sounds like a good, good purpose. But they also recommended reaching out to our traffic engineer, John Willett, with suggestions regarding access or improvements. I'm not sure to staff if we can put that in our recommendations or stipulations, but I would like to hear from Mr. Gilbert to the City of Gilbert's comments.
The, we would be more than pleased, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McGee, we would be more than pleased to reach out to them and discuss any traffic mitigation measures they'd be interested in. And we would do that prior to the hearing before the Board of Supervisors.
And Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I thought of my other one. Commissioner Swart had referenced an ATA, an authority to arrest or a no trespassing signage. It's my understanding, Mr. Gilbert, that that's already, that property is already posted?
Yes, we have posted no trespassing signs at the request of the county.
Okay.
I don't think there's been any, we don't have any authority to contact the local police jurisdiction and ask them to do anything. So that would have to come from the county.
Thank you.
Thank you much, Commissioner McGee. Darren, was there anything you wanted to, did you have anything to add? If not, that's okay.
Mr. Chairman, the traffic studies are requirements of our plans of development and will be addressed technically with plan development and construction permitting, when we know exactly what's being built and what traffic needs will be generated. So that, you know, that is something that will be addressed later. I do believe Buckeye's strong concerns may have been addressed towards a later case on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you very much, Darren.
I agree. That wasn't our case that Buckeye was concerned about.
Yes, Joseph, were you?
Chairman, if I may, I did include with the report packet of response from Buckeye documenting that they have no concerns.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you very much. Commissioner Limblom?
Thank you, Chairman Mitchell.
Thank you, Chairman Mitchell. Mr. Gilbert, my question's related to the CUPD restrictions and sewer, and I just want to make sure that we have this the way that it's supposed to be and the way you want it to be. So my understanding of this is that the applicant's willing to, to agree to not have any of the listed A through F items. My concern is I see something like liquor stores as one of the lists, and if you look at, there was wording in here that says, until this, until such time as the site is served by sewer, uses on the site shall only be those acceptable to the MCSED, so that's our environmental services department, that can be accommodated by a septic system. So I just want to give the example of a gas station that does meet, that, I'm not saying it does, but let's say that it did meet their standards. I'm just concerned that we have like liquor store in there and that they're selling liquor and that, in a gas station. Are we thinking of those types of things as we put these restrictions on? I just wanted to hear your thoughts on that.
My understanding of those restrictions is that a convenience market, for example, would not be precluded.
Okay, thank you, and I just wanted to, that's, that's my concern is what's the definition of a liquor store? I'm trying to foresee a potential issue there.
That's a good, that's a good catch.
Yeah, so if you're okay with the language, I'm fine with it, I'm just trying to bring it up, you're the applicant, so.
I, we can live with that.
Okay.
In fairness, I'm not gonna go back on what I negotiated with the staff, so.
Right, okay, and, and it may be fine, that convenience, I, I understand your definition too, that for me, that's not a liquor store, it's very different. So, okay, thank you, Mr. Gilbert, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert, and Commissioner Limblom. Any other questions for the applicant from the commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Swart?
Thank you, I'll be brief. Just so I understand, I, I believe I'm a careful listener and it appears to me, just to put numbers on things, that most of the opposition occurred when you had the first zoning. My understanding, based on your presentation, there was only two people that were in opposition after the zoning change. Am I correct on that, Mr. Gilbert?
That's correct, there are only two petitions in opposition that were filed after we amended the application from C to C one CUPD.
And then my second question, which is supporting Commissioner McGee's question with the trespassing issue. Actually, it will not be the county that makes the request from the police. So if your responsible party or owner will fill out what Commissioner McGee, pardon me, Commissioner McGee mentioned as an NTA, the Buckeye Police will put that in their mobile data computers, and once it's signed, that's when they can do the enforcement, so that's the missing piece. So this trespassing issue, these vehicles causing dust and other irritation, we can clean that up very quickly.
Good, and we would be very willing to do that.
Thank you, sir.
We have tenaciously attempted to get those taco stands off the property, we, we don't like them there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Swart.
And we make no income, obviously, off of those taco stands, they're classic trespassers.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gilbert. Any final questions for the applicant by the commission? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Gilbert. Now we'll proceed with in-person speakers if we have any, and then followed by registered online folks that would like to speak after a public comment. We'll allow time for the applicant to rebut anything that's said. Do we have any in-person speakers that would like to speak on behalf of these matters? Okay. Rachel, are you aware of anybody online wishing to speak?
We do not have anybody online registered to speak in either of the cases.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, then we will close the public forum. And I would invite the commission to begin discussions if there's anything we would like to discuss beyond what we've already discussed on these two matters.
Quick question.
Go ahead.
Yes, Commissioner Montoya?
Yeah, are we voting on these items separately?
Yes, there will be two separate motions.
Well, I'd like to, unless there's any other comments, since this is in District Five, I'd like to, I'm prepared to make a motion, but I'd like to hear other comments from commissioners.
Understood, thank you, Commissioner Montoya, I believe Commissioner Limblom would like to say something.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman Mitchell. I remember that, I'm almost positive this was the Gilbert Dollar that I participated in many years ago, that's adjacent to this property. And if my recollection serves right, I was supportive of that Gilbert Dollar. For the same reasons I'm, I support this land use today, and that's what this is about, it's about whether this is an appropriate location. We can talk about kind of the issues that are on the property right now, but that's really not in our, in our purview. What, what matters is, and I will echo Mr. Gilbert's thoughts, that this is more of an appropriate place for commercial than it is for residential. And with major artilleries and, and the use that's been proposed, this is not a use that will bring in people from out of area. This is, these are neighborhood uses and that will support this neighborhood and their, and provide services for them. And for those reasons, I, I'm very supportive of this, I think it's screaming for support. And I feel like there, whether or not it appeared there was a lot of outreach, I can see the applicant's effort to make changes to be more compatible with, with the use and so on, thankful for that, I think it was a good change, so that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Limblom. I would also like to commend the staff and the applicant for working together on this. It seems like C one is, is a much better use and a better fit for the parcels there than, than C two. And, and it does appear to me to be a pretty, it seems to be a good fit for development moving forward. Does the commission have any other, any other comments before Commissioner? Yes, was that Commissioner Swart?
Yes, just briefly, I want to echo some of the comments just made by yourself and Commissioner Limblom. I, I too want to commend the applicant and staff for working so hard, I believe the applicant went above and beyond, did a comprehensive public safety study, I've read that in detail, and I'm aware of Mr. Walp as a national expert on these matters. So I appreciate not just the time, but the extra money spent. And as long as they have agreed to, the county taking a look at ingress egress and some of these other things, I am in full support and very proud of the presentation today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Swart. Any final words before Commissioner Montoya, if you'd still like to make a motion?
Yes, yes, I'm prepared to make a motion on this item, but before, I'd like to add a couple of comments. I think that several years ago, on the general dollar debate, we knew that, I think, or at least I knew at that point, that if that general, general dollar store was approved, that the natural fit would have been for some type of commercial use in that large property adjacent to it, in that very important intersection. And while I appreciate Mr. Gilbert's comment indicating that Supervisor Gallardo is in support of this, we are a separate body with our own separate voices and we make decisions, it's actually more of a recommendation to the Board of supervisors and they can accept or deny or make their own decisions on this. But with that, I'd like to move to approve case number CPA two zero two two zero one four, the Elliot Corner Commercial Property.
Thank you, Commissioner Montoya, we have a motion to approve that case. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, this is Commissioner Dan Zeisen.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Dan Zeisen, if we could have a roll call.
Commissioner Dan Zeisen?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Limblom?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
Chairman Mitchell?
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you very much, Rosalie, and there is another matter here that needs to be moved one way or another. Do we have a motion for that?
Yes, this is Commissioner Montoya, I'd like to move that we adopt case item number Z two zero one 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 five, the Elliot Corner Commercial Property.
Thank you, Commissioner Montoya, and I believe, I believe it's case number Z two zero two one 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 five. I just want to confirm, we have a, okay, right for the record there. We have a motion by Commissioner Montoya, do we have a second?
I'll second it, this is Commissioner Dan Zeisen.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Dan Zeisen, could we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Dan Zeisen?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Limblom?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
Chairman Mitchell?
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you very much, Rosalie, thank you for, thank you to the applicant as well for that presentation. We will move on to regular agenda, item number six, if we could have presentation by staff on this matter.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the board. Case Z two zero two two zero one nine is a request for a special use permit for a period of ten years for utilizing the site as a wholesale storage and growing grounds for the adjacent Moon Valley Nursery and Supervisor District Number Four. The subject site is located at eight six one six West Pinnacle Peak Road in the Peoria area. The site is currently zoned rural forty-three and is approximately four point two acres. The site lies at the northeast corner of Pinnacle Peak Road and eighty-seventh Avenue. Although the zoning district allows agricultural oriented uses, it has been determined that wholesale storage and similar interim industrial uses are not an accessory use customarily incidental to any permitted principal use in a rural zoning district. And the requested use is specifically listed under special uses in the Maricopa County zoning ordinance under Article one three zero one point one point twelve. The request includes the following, a ten-year special use permit for growing and wholesale storage of nursery products. Staff would like to note that no other development variations to the rural forty-three development standards are requested, such as a reduction in setbacks and height and increase in height. There is also no retail component proposed to be expanded with this request. Additionally, no new structures are proposed with this request. The request would accomplish the following, allowing the proposed wholesale storage and growing of nursery plants for ten years and remedy the violation number V two zero two one zero zero six four eight, found by the Department for the Operation of a Commercial Business in a Residential District. For the final partisan, citizen participation report, a resident living within three hundred foot feet of the subject site voiced concerns over noise, business operations, employee behavior, and concerns over Moon Valley Nursery, non-compliance with condition of approval for the retail nursery adjacent east of the subject site, under an older previously approved special use permit. A second resident communicated concerns over water and wastewater uses on the subject site and the adjacent retail nursery site, along with concerns over the state of disrepair of a perimeter fence at the northernmost end of the retail portion of the nursery. I would like to add that these are not subject of the, are not subject of this application. All concerns regarding water and wastewater will require coordination with Maricopa County Environmental Services. If a violation is found, the applicant request pertains only to the wholesale storage and growing plants on the subject parcel for a period of ten years and does not include expansion of the retail component to the east. Staff received direct communication from one other, one of the area residences identified by the applicant. Concerns over wa, water use, wastewater, and the dilapidated fencing were discussed. Staff has included correspondence, correspondence received by this individual, along with letters received by the residents within three hundred feet of the subject site to the report. Staff would like to note that enforcement of any wastewater complaints will be addressed by Maricopa County Environmental Services. Finally, staff would like to state the final number of letters received by area residents, one letter of opposition, one letter of concern without opposition, and one letter of support for the request. Given neighborhood context and existing development patterns, approving the use for a period of ten years will give Moon Valley Nursery an opportunity to operate the site while demonstrating to the neighborhood that the use remains appropriate and can operate harmoniously with the rural residential environment, given the recommended conditions of approval. Staff recommends to commission adopt a motion recommending the Board of Supervisors approve case number Z two zero two two zero one nine, subject to the following conditions A through M. At this time, I would like to, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Daniel. Any preliminary questions for staff by the commission? I have an initial question, when was the violation issued?
In the year two thousand twenty-one, but I do not have the exact.
That's, that's close enough for me, I was just curious, thank you. Any other question? Yes, Commissioner?
Just, just a quick question, is this a, I'm unclear as to whether it's a ask permission or beg forgiveness request?
This would be a request for forgiveness.
So the, the, the application for the permit came in after the violation was issued, is that?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, any other?
I get the question.
Yes, Commissioner.
So this is just for one parcel, but it looks like there's two parcels there that are operating as Moon Valley?
This would be the subject for the western parcel only.
Okay, so then the eastern parcel already has an SUP that's intact?
Correct.
And when does that SUP expire?
I would have to take a look at that, give me one second.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think that's in the staff report, I believe it's twenty twenty-seven, we'll have to look, I'm sorry, we'll have to get back to you.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no problem, we can address that later when we close the forum.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. Any other initial questions for the staff? Okay, then we'd like to call on the applicant, if the applicant is either here or on, on the call to present their case.
Good morning, commissioners, my name is Carlos Marieta, and I'm an architect, and I have been supporting Moon Valley Nurseries into this process, you know, to be able to get them, you know, aligned with some of these previous violations and, you know, a plan to be able to resolve some of the issues presented by the different neighbors. So if we can please go to the following slide, following the next one. All right, so it's kind of like small letters, but, so the, a little description, you know, this lot is located, you know, just south of, you know, residential lots, you know, we are surrounded actually by residential lots, you know, all around. As we understand, you know, from the information received, you know, we are in an RU forty-three zoning, which will allow, you know, some of this, you know, uses or rerouteal type of uses, with the exception, you know, as was mentioned here, that it would require a special use permit to be able to sell, you know, or operate on, on sales. Now, the, the product that, you know, they were selling is basically, you know, plants, trees and, you know, shrubs and, and everything that you can think of, you know, for your landscape. Following slide, please. As part of the, the process, you know, when we started reviewing this, we noticed that there were a few things, you know, that were not in compliance, like the grading, you know, the drainage of the property, so drawings and information was prepared and, you know, submitted to the county for, to assure, you know, that any runoff of water or any concerns of that type will be addressed, you know, through, through these improvements. to assure, you know, that any runoff of water or any concerns of that type will be addressed, you know, to, to these improvements. Also, that included, you know, outdoor, outdoor lighting, you know, increase to make sure that the lighting was not, you know, going into the residential properties as well. And also to make sure that there wasn't going to, not going to be any additional construction. In addition to that, you know, there was a request to change the hours of operation, you know, to a certain limit, so that will be not, will not be disruptive, you know, for the, the neighbors around. There's an existing residence as part of this site that was being used as a play with workers, you know, will, will stay to be able to take care of all of the, the trees and plants that are in place. You know, as part of this, you know, sort of middle or request, you know, Moon Valley Nursery is planning not to have anyone staying at this house over the period of time, you know, for business operation only. And the next slide, please. And go to the next one. So these are some of the drawings, you know, generated just by a civil engineer, to be able to provide, you know, all of the issues or solve the issues related to this drainage or grading required at the property, which some of those occurred, you know, during the process of basically growing plants in, in the site. But this will address, you know, some of the water runoff and make sure, you know, that this is not affecting, you know, the, either the street or, you know, the surrounding portions of, of the site. Also, at the same time, traffic analysis, you know, was completed and some other studies, you know, to make sure that this, this property was going to be in compliance, you know, in terms of the, the approved use already in place. Next slide. And there's some, some of the images related to, you know, what, what you see around the site, you know, like we mentioned, there's a lot of, you know, growing, you know, you know, trees or, you know, keeping trees ready for distribution or for sale around the area. Next slide. And with that, I think, you know, we'll just open for any questions.
Thank you very much. Does the commission have any questions for the applicant? Okay, no questions for the applicant for now. We will proceed.
Sorry, I was hoping somebody else would ask this, Commissioner McGee.
Of course, yeah.
And thank you very much, sir, for your presentation. I wanted to ask, I know there was a reference in the letter, and I don't know whether this question is for you or for staff, but a letter of opposition talking about backup noise from big trucks. What is your response to that? I, there was also, it sounds like you're limiting the business hours. Could you clarify, please? That's it.
Well, one of the, one of the items that we have on our, you know, recommendations was there's a six, six-foot fence on the north side, you know, where the, the residential properties are. There's, there's the possibility to raise this fence up to eight feet, you know, in the neighborhood area of, of those residences. You know, that's, that will, you know, minimize a little more of that, you know, traffic of trucks coming in and out of the, of the property.
Thank you.
I, I have a question. How long has the current use been, been operating on that site? So I understand that the, the violation was issued a couple of years ago in twenty twenty-one. How, how long before that had the property been operating in a commercial manner?
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Adrian Biseña from our architectural group. So a worker from the Moon Valley Nursery said that they've been in the neighborhood for about twenty years.
Okay, and do you know if that was the, the eastern parcel that I know is not part of this case or, or the parcel at issue? Has that also been operating in a commercial capacity for twenty years?
I wouldn't be sure, but I'm betting it's probably the eastern one.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for the applicant for now from the commission? Okay, thank you very much. At this point, we'll proceed with in-person speakers. I currently have four speakers, or at least two people that would like to speak and two people that maybe would like to speak, and, and we'll find out at that time. If there's anyone else that would like to speak on this, please come grab a speaker's card. And each one of the members of the public will have two minutes to speak. As you can see, we have a little timer up there. First, I'd like to call on Juan Toledo.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Juan Toledo. I'm one of the member, one of the property owners just north of this property. I'm the one that wrote the letter. I can answer all your questions. I'm retired Air Force. I'm a senior NCO. I lived in Phoenix area for thirty-seven years. I lived in Phoenix, Mesa. And then we finally bought our dream home in Maricopa County. My wife and I worked for forty-two years busting our bus to be able to get this property, but we're planning to retire. When we heard the lot was bought by a possible member related to the owner of Moon Valley, we were actually kind of excited because we had no buffer between us and Pinnacle Peak. We're going to have trees blocking the area, and it was going to be nice and peaceful. Boy, were we wrong. But we ended up getting, it's a loud, obnoxious, condescending neighbor that did not care at all about the neighborhood nor the surrounding area. Here, and that happened, by the way, that purchase was happening in twenty eighteen. You asked about that question? Twenty-eight, and they started moving in to that lot in twenty nineteen. The reason why they got a grading permit is because I complained about it. Because my concern, all our lots drain into that area. When they, and I really didn't complain about it. I asked for a courtesy inspection because we don't want our backyard flooded. And that's when it come out, oh, oh, we need a grading permit. Okay. The violation about running a business without a license, that was me. Because backup alarms are constant. That's the most annoying noise in the world, and they're constant to this day, to today, this morning. Oh, not this morning, but to yesterday, backup alarm, everything that has backup alarm. I even sent them a regulation where it says it doesn't require, as long as you have a a spotter or cameras or something, you know, but it's constant. This is putting, I'm, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
This is putting, honestly, a construction company in my backyard that operates from zero four forty in the morning to seven or eight o'clock at night every day. It is beyond frustrating. And working on a project that is never going to end. You asked about the application of the other lot. Forty-seven. Twenty forty-seven is where that special use permit expires. You know, our biggest gripe is that they never came to us at all. I asked them, hey, do you guys mind doing it? And I haven't made no attempt at all to meet with the neighbors. It's, it's really, really frustrating. I'm sorry, I'll, I'll try to eat.
Thank you.
So I have called violations. They have violated just about everything in RU forty-three. The inspectors come over and say, well, we know we're going to, they're applying for a special use license, so we're going to use this phantom special use license to enforce. And he actually told me, well, it can be in the property before seven thirty. Okay, talk to the manager, you cannot be in the property before seven thirty. They agreed to that. Two, three days, which, by the way, there's zero means of operation. They're good for two, two to seven days, and then go right back to doing whatever they, they need to do. So they go back, coming in before that, called the inspector. The inspector comes out, catches it, talks to them, then he goes talk to the supervisor, and then they come back and say, well, it really says operating hours, which we interpreted as doing business. So as long as the customers are not in there before those hours, we're okay. I said, what does that mean? Well, they can be here before that. So when before that? Anytime before that. So my complaint about noise at five o'clock in the morning for the backup alarm to the loaders went unanswered. You know, well, we're going to try to do it. So this, this thing about seven, seven o'clock or whatever they're proposing now is in conjunction to that other law. They're also proposing seven days a week, so we have no peace at all. It is, if you look at the application of the other lot, the east lot, you read it and you're like, oh, this is a mom and pop nursery, which in fact was a mom and pop nursery when the application was submitted in twenty, or nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety-eight, then again in two thousand and one. Moon Valley is a huge multimillion dollar, multi-state operation that requires just on this location, three loaders, one backhoe, a flatbed truck, actually, three delivery trucks, one gooseneck, and a minimum fifteen employees, or thirteen employees is what I counted one time. This does not belong in our backyard. It doesn't belong in your backyard either. It, it is just, the biggest thing is that they never talk to us. Can we come up with agreement? Maybe. But let's sit down. I even asked the inspector, I said, you're talking to the number two of the company. I asked the inspector, say, hey, I haven't come over. We'll go down the street at Campbell's and sit down in our open set and just come up with an agreement. Tell me that you're not going to have anybody making noise at seven o'clock in the morning, or before seven o'clock in the morning. You're going to get rid of all the backups alarmed. It's bad enough that the tractors, as they run through, they tend to have races down the back. It's just the rattle. It's just, I have.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we have to be mindful, but I do have a question for you before you go. I know you mentioned that you own one of the properties that borders to the north. It looks like there might be four homes to the north. Which, which one are you?
Her first one on the left, the one with the white.
Okay, I, I see the one you're talking about. The farthest west that is adjacent on the north side.
That is correct.
Okay, okay.
If I may.
If, if you can, very, very quickly, I just want to be thoughtful of everyone else's time.
But I have with me fifteen letters objecting to this property and an outline of what we're objecting about, that we just got from the neighbors yesterday, two of which were here with me today, that we would like to present. I also have copies of the emails. I've gone back and forth with us and code compliance with us and, and Moon Valley Nursery for you guys to see it. Because if you really honestly, I would not wish them on you, on your neighborhood. We're not talking, money has no issue, right? But those are average million dollar homes that we bust our butt for.
Appreciate that. Okay.
Anyways, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry it went this long. I didn't mean it. I tried to put it in two minutes. It was just nobody was going to have.
I, I get it. And, and, you know, to your point, if, if you have some additional letters there that didn't make it into the record previously, you can leave those with staff as well. And, you know, as it relates to the other folks, if you haven't come and filled out a speaker card, you're welcome to. We would love to hear from you as well. So thank you for your time, Mr. Toledo. We appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
For Mr. Toledo's, so he understands, if he drops off the record, if this case is continued, it'll be in your next staff report packet. If it is not continued, if you act, recommend approval or denial, it will be in the Board of Supervisors packet for next month.
Okay.
Also, we have confirmed the special use permit for the retail plant nursery proper to the east does expire August twenty forty-seven.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Darren.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner McGee. Question for staff?
Yes, Commissioner McGee.
Or the applicant. Trying to figure out in a case like this, where you're already an operating business, not proposing to come in and do this type of activity, what is the outreach and what has been the outreach to the neighbors regarding this application?
If, if staff would like to answer that, and then we'll give applicant obviously a chance as well.
Sure. So provided by the applicant, we did minimum three hundred foot notification as required by the zoning ordinance. I did send out postcards to the residents as required, as required by those zoning ordinance in February with enough time to prepare for the, for this meeting.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, the, the ordinance, the minimum required says an outreach by statute, as well as a first-class mill, the property numbers are record within a three hundred foot radius, and then the posting of the site, which would be the two corners or every quarter mile along road frontage. That is the minimum requirement. The applicant can speak if they did, went above that. I'm not aware of that.
Okay, thank you, Darren. Thank you, Daniel. I welcome the applicant. If you have anything to add to that?
Just, just also the fact, you know, that we were open to receive some of the calls and talk to the neighbors. I think, you know, we receive a couple of calls and just try to explain and clarify, you know, what, what this was all about, you know, what it's a day we were trying to do. And just to be informational about, you know, the process and what's happening.
Okay, thank you very much.
So just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McGee, this, there is no difference. And staff has confirmed the process was followed?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McGee, the minimum citizen participation requirement in the ordinance was followed.
And, and I think to Commissioner McGee's question, there's no difference as it relates to the public outreach, whether they apply for the permit before or after a violation is issued, right?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. It's the same requirement in order to obtain this zoning entitlement and prepare for public hearings. It's, it's, there's the same minimum requirements must be there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner McGee. Thank you, Darren. Next, we will have Jane Triplett, if you would like to come speak.
Thank you. My name is Jane Triplett, and I live on Avenida del Sol. And I walk my dogs to, on the north side of the property to the east. It has been a trash pit there. We walk in the, I have three greyhounds, and we walk early in the morning, four thirty, five o'clock during the summer, and there's loud music playing. There's the beep, 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 beep constantly of backup trucks. And there's dust. I don't think it was mentioned about the new property having rats that go into neighbors' yards. And it's a real, it's something that needs to be mitigated anyway, that, that something needs to be done, and I don't think it's been addressed at all. And it's a disgust. But as someone who walks daily, twice sometimes, it's not appropriate.
Thank you very much. And thank you for being prompt with that. Next, we have Linda Patterson. You indicated you weren't sure if you wanted to speak. Okay, okay, sounds good. Come on down. And I, I should mention, thank you very much to Ms. Triplett for, for being prompt in your remarks. We do, we want to make sure we maintain quorum, and some of the commissioners might have to drop off, so if you could really try to keep it to, okay, thank you.
Let me address some of the back history. I have lived in that neighborhood for thirty-five years. I was one of those petition, or not petitioners, but people that, that little guy that used to live in that property where Moon Valley's main nursery sits, asked his neighbors if he could have a small local nursery for us, a small local nursery. We allowed him to do that. A few years later, a couple, wasn't very many, all of a sudden, Moon Valley is there. I'm part of the problem, I assume, because I allowed a neighbor to do something that I thought was kind, and a few other people did too. That's one thing, Moon Valley is an issue. I, I didn't know it was till forty forty-seven, or twenty forty-seven, but the new lot, I can tell you for sure that there's still a drainage issue because I saw the man, Brooks, across the street of Pinnacle Peak, some pumping his water out of his driveway after that last rain we had. And I stopped and I spoke with him, and I said, my gosh, Kit, what are you doing? And we, we got to chatting about it. I also know that for me, I have stopped personally at Moon Valley Nursery four times, complaining about their water usage, that they just let their water from their wells run down the ditch on, and I sent pictures. I'm one of the people who originally saw that sign that you guys posted. I didn't get a message because I live a couple blocks more, you know, north of Pinnacle Peak. I didn't get the, the notice in the mail. So I saw the sign one day. I took my picture. I believe I called this young lady right here, who was very nice on my dad and spoke to me, gave me his little history. And anyway, she told me what was going on, and I, you know, I'm adamant about this, the water issue. They, they let it waste and waste and waste. They don't have sunrise water, like I pay for sunrise water, so believe me, I don't waste water for two reasons. Once, I think it's a sin. Second, it might hurt my pocketbook. So, you know, to just let that water run down the street, the ditch, days after days after days. Now, this last week, it's gone. The, the hole's fixed, the drain's fixed. You know, I don't know what to say. I know that I hear the noise. My husband goes, we were early risers. We live three streets north, and he can hear the backup beeping of that, that, those machinery. You know, I, I, I'm concerned. And I just think that a big business has moved into our little neighborhood, that if you look on the, on the map, you'll see that the only other thing that's there is Campbell's Mercantile, that used to be a little store that's now a restaurant down at the end of Ninety-first and Pinnacle Peak and Great Heart School, which is on the corner of Eighty-third Avenue and Pinnacle Peak. That's it. And that's a major business with big trucks, and that, those, that's a two-lane street. And that's a major business with big trucks and that, those, that's a two-lane street. It's not like I listen to other gentlemen have lots of time to explain his theory about it being a major intersection. Well, ours really isn't a major intersection. We have a business in a rural R forty-three neighborhood and it's just not right. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for coming and voicing your concerns. Uh, we also have Mr. Paul Patterson, would you like to speak as well, sir? Okay, thank you. While you're coming up, I do have a question for staff related to, you know, any potential drainage issues. Those would be regulated by environmental services, is that right? Water issues? Like if one of the neighbors was, you know, having flooding that seemed to be resulting from the lot, would they contact environmental services to try to lodging complaint or get them to come out?
Mr. Chairman, they would contact planning and development if there is a drainage issue.
Okay.
And we would look to see if drainage has been altered or if there's unpermitted construction.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Patterson.
Yes. In the early mornings, the beeping is every day, every day. And everybody out there is an early riser. And the, the big thing is the water. You know, they may own their own well, but they're sticking their straw down in our aquifer and wasting it. Another thing we haven't considered, on all those trees, they have to be putting something on them to keep the animals and bugs from eating them. And most of that must be getting washed off also. I'd like to see that addressed also. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Patterson. I believe that's all we have for in-person speakers on this matter. Uh, Rachel, do we have anybody online?
Chairman, I do not have anybody with raised hands to speak on the case.
Okay. And I, I should have asked the commission if they had any questions for, for any of those presenters. But if we don't, I'm sure we can, move forward and, um, it looks like we're going to give the applicant an opportunity to provide some rebuttal if you have anything to add. You don't need to, but if, if you'd like to.
Yeah, I would, I would like to say, you know, I, um, like I just mentioned, I'm the architect and trying to help out in, in this. And I think it's important, you know, for us to have solutions. Uh, you know, we will be happy to, uh, you know, start entertaining and see how we can, you know, eliminate noise, you know, what solutions are out there. This is something, you know, that the wall is not going to fix, you know, it has to be fixed on the windows or the walls or something like that, you know. But, um, you know, I think, uh, you know, our client is, you know, is open to, to find a solution for, for it.
Okay, thank you. Um, unfortunately, we really have to move forward. Um, so at this point, we'll be closing the public forum. Uh, and now we'd like to turn to the commission to have some discussion on this matter. Yes, Commissioner Limblom.
I just have a quick question about, uh, and this is for staff about rural forty-three. So I'm looking at our ordinance. I don't know what it's called, it's a book, it's like seven hundred pages long or something, but under rural R forty-three, it says the purpose, the principal purpose of this zoning district is to conserve and protect farms and other open land uses, foster orderly growth in rural and agriculture areas, prevent urban and agricultural land use conflicts and encourage sustainable development. But when governmental facilities and services, public utilities and street access are available or can reasonably be made available, which is I think where we're starting, we are in this particular neighborhood, application, applications for change of this zoning district to any single-family residential zoning district will be given favorable, favorable, favorable consideration. My, my question is this next statement. Principal uses permitted in this zoning district include both farm and non-farm residential uses, farms and recreational and institutional uses. And so my question about this is, Moon Valley Nursery seems like a farm to me. Is it not? And, and if so, and, and if it was, and it, wouldn't that be a, a, a use that's within R forty-three? That's what I'm seeking clarity on here.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioner Limblom, uh, it's a good question. There, uh, a wholesale nursery where plants are grown on site would be treated as a farm use. It's permitted by right in the rural zoning districts. A retail nursery requires a special use permit. And, uh, and, uh, and that's where we're at with, with this item.
Okay, and, and that, so, and yeah, to hear, and we don't like a lot of like talking in the audience, just so, you know, like it's commission, but, um, so the, our, the, what you're saying is because it's retail, that's requiring the special use permit.
That is correct.
But if, if they were truly wholesale, it would, it would not require.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Limblom, that's correct. If they were a wholesale operation, uh, they would be permitted by right if they're entitled to the existing zoning that they have.
Thank you for the.
There may be certain conditions, setbacks and things they have to meet, but similar to a house in rural forty-three zoning district, has to be certain setbacks.
So the fact that they sell to a homeowner or something versus a, a.
Another nursery.
Would, okay, is the difference, but that's the only difference in what this, they would be allowed to do it if they weren't selling it to an individual. Uh, you can see where I'm going with this.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just like, uh, semi-trucks, flatbeds related to hauling farm equipment, our farm surplus would be permitted accessory to an agricultural operation.
Thank you for helping me.
And if I could, just one quick comment, I believe they've, they're coming in under a ten-year SUP category called interim industrial use, I believe because we were focusing on this site as being, uh, more of the landscape material supplies. If this was an SUP category just for the retail nursery, it could be another thirty-year SUP or a ten-year SUP or anything in between.
Got it, thank you very much, Commissioner Limblom, thank you, Darren. Um, I have a question as well. As it relates to the hours of operation, or, you know, when we list hours of operation, does that purely mean that during those times it's allowed to be open to the public?
Mr. Chairman, um, I will, uh, I will answer this if, but, um, it would be my judgment call as a regulator that that would be hours of operation. That means they should not be operating business outside those hours unless it was specifically clarified otherwise with the language of the condition. If, if I, uh, was a responding code enforcement officer, uh, and they were operating outside those hours, I would, uh, I would carry them before the hearing officer, administrative hearing, uh, and let the hearing officer make a determination on whether or not that is a zoning violation.
Got it, okay. Thank you for answering that. Any other comments from the commission?
Uh, yes, I have a comment.
Yes, Commissioner Montoya.
Yes. Um, I, I'm concerned, um, you know, with the public input about, um, the noise and, um, the non-compliance of the operating hours and the water drainage. Is there some way that, um, would the, would the applicant be agreeable to, uh, continue this, um, application a month or two later to sit down and speak with the residents and come to some agreement about, especially those that are immediately impacted about, um, the noise factor at four forty in the morning and, um, you know, the, the, the heavy, uh, equipment, uh, beeps that happen, you know, from four in the morning until seven PM. That's a question I pose to the applicant.
I'd like to invite the applicant if you'd like to answer that.
Yes, actually, I think, you know, it would be beneficial for, for everyone used to sit down and have a conversation about solutions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Montoya. I was kind of leaning in, in the same direction. I think there's obviously pros and cons to this case. There's a, a nursery just down the street from me, um, and so I'm not directly adjacent to it. It's, it's better than some uses that could be used on the property, but at the same time, I wouldn't want, um, I have some construction going on directly behind me and I hear the beeps in the early morning and, but I, I have the benefit of knowing that that's going to be over eventually after construction. So I, I'm sympathetic to, to what you're saying. Um, and, and to your point, Commissioner Montoya, I think it might make sense in order for there to be some discussion, uh, further discussion between the applicant and the neighbors to see if we can hammer out some additional stipulations, uh, to make this more palatable.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner McGee.
This is Commissioner McGee, uh, that is exactly my line of thinking there are, there, I, I struggle with these SUPs in certain instances and this is certainly one. And I am hearing issues that are being raised and by people have taken the time to come down and testify in person and write letters and documents. Uh, I don't think just because the business is there and operating, it should be an automatic. So I think they could go back and work out particularly around the area of noise. I was a little concerned about rats as well. Um, you know, is there a pest problem? Uh, and come back with a tighter agreement for operations that then can be enforced. So everybody can live in harmony to some degree.
Thank you, Commissioner McGee. Um, question for staff unless we have, okay. If, if we decide to, you know, to continue this matter, what are some of our next, um, meetings? I know we were going to potentially, uh, move the next one, right? Or cancel the next one? What, what are the dates we're looking at?
Uh, Chairman, we have March twenty-third, which would be the next one, which is a little tight of a timeline.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the next couple hearings are April sixth and then April twentieth.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Swart.
Yeah, I think that this, I am in total agreement with Commissioner McGee and Commissioner Montoya. And I'm greatly bothered not only by the illegal operation, but it would have been very easy for Moon Valley, they're a big corporation. I'm sure they have all kinds of resources. And I'm really upset that they didn't take the time to do a modification to those trucks. Uh, this is an easy fix. There's a modification where the, uh, beeping under Title twenty-eight, they'd have to keep it active, but it can be plugged and unplugged when they're on private property. There's no, uh, law under Title twenty-eight that governs vehicles on private property. And the OSHA standard is exactly what the first gentleman spoke about, as long as there's a safety officer and a person, uh, there to, uh, with a flag to direct the person so nobody's injured, no children, animals, that he doesn't back into any other objects. And I'm really upset that this was never looked at. Uh, like I said, this isn't just some person that put some trees on a corner that had one truck. And I feel so bad for these neighbors and especially this first speaker and all the other speakers who have been bothered by this beeping. It's no different than, you know, uh, trucks that are modified with governors because they're going too fast and people are misusing. And these are all things that are readily available and should have been looked at. So I'm concerned and I will tell you that unless these things are resolved, and hopefully we can postpone this for a couple of months, that I will be a definite no on this unless these things are resolved, um, professionally and that there's not any bullying going on just because they're a big company. These, these are important things to protect these neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Swart. I, I happen to be of the, uh, opinion that maybe, um, some significant discussions and changes could be made by the April twentieth, um, meeting. Curious what the rest of the commission thinks, whether they think that's too short, too long, if we decide to do a continuance here.
Mr. Chairman, I'll jump in, this Commissioner McGee.
Yes, Commissioner McGee.
There appears from testimony provided, uh, or there is alleged that there is a history of not honoring commitments made, uh, to the residents. And so, um, that, that's, that's a high bar for me going forward. Um, this is a very, very reputable, well-known, uh, business, uh, and I support it. They should know better. And I think they need a, a real signal, uh, related to these operations. There is a way to live in peace, but they've got to hold up their end. So I'm not so much worried about the timeline as constructing restrictions that are appropriate and enforceable and will help the residents, but also making sure that those in fact are honored. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McGee. So I would like to ask the applicant, do you believe, uh, that you'll have enough time if, if we continue this to the April twentieth, April twentieth meeting that you'd be able to discuss with, with the neighbors and maybe put together some stipulations or?
Uh, yes, definitely. And this is a process, you know, that has been going on for a while, uh, you know, coordinated with, uh, Daniel here. Uh, we will be, um, you know, happy to, to try to address that by April twenty and have, uh, solutions.
Okay, and.
And I just, uh, Chairman, I'll just add, if you, if you and the neighbors feel you need more time, you can always come and ask for more time on that date. So they could make that request prior.
Yeah, prior, yeah.
So, so you'll, you would have more time if you need it, so it's not a hard task.
Okay, any other, uh, comments on that? Otherwise, otherwise I'm happy to make a, a motion to continue this. Okay, I, I will make a motion then, uh, Vice Chair Mitchell, to continue case number Z two zero two two zero one nine, uh, until the April twentieth Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner, uh, Montoya with the second. Could we have a roll call?
Commissioner Dan Zeison.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Limblom.
Yes.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya.
Yes.
Commissioner Swart.
Yes.
And Chairman Mitchell.
Yes.
Chairman, that's a continuance, um, by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you very much. And, uh, uh, Mr. Marietta, I guess you have your marching orders. Um, thank you very much to the, to the folks that came out and spoke about this. Uh, that's, this obviously is important to you. So thank you for making your voices heard and we're optimistic that, uh, maybe there'll be able to be some agreement reached to make this more palatable. Okay, um, we have about thirteen minutes before Commissioner Limblom has to leave. So we'll see if we can move through this next one quick, but, um, I would ask the staff to, uh, present, uh, regular agenda item number seven.
Thank you, Chairman and members of the commission. Case Z two zero two 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 oh six, this is ju, is a zone change with overlay from rural forty-three to C two C U P D located on the northeast corner of one hundred and fifteenth Avenue and Thomas Road in Supervisor District Four. The site is approximately four point one acres in size and located in the Buckeye area. The request would allow the future development of a commercial retail corner, limited only to uses which can be served by septic and asked to be accepted and approved, and approved by the Maricopa County Environmental Services Department. The applicant has complied with public participation requirements for posting and notification. The city of Buckeye has submitted opposition to the request stating a C two use at the corner does not comply with the city's general plan classification for neighborhood commercial uses, which were allowed under their plan at this location. Furthermore, the city has expressed that they do, that they do not wish to see uses that allow outdoor storage to be developed on the site. Staff believes the site to be appropriate for commercial development as it is located on the corner of two major arterial roads. Further, there will be demand for community commercial nodes due to the dynamic residential growth of the surrounding area. Staff recognizes Buckeye's concerns of potential outdoor storage issues and notes that outdoor storage uses are not entitled within C two zoning. Staff recommends the commission adopt a motion recommending that the Board of Supervisors approve Z two zero two 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 oh five, subject to conditions A through G. At this time, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much, Andrew. Uh, does the commission have any questions for staff? Okay, uh, then I would invite the applicant, uh, if you would like to introduce yourself and also about the case.
Yeah, my name's Adam Baugh, twenty-five, twenty-five East Arizona. Unfortunately, I don't get paid by the word like Paul Gilbert does. It's probably a good thing for you guys, you have short time today. I'll be brief, uh, this is a, normally an item that's on consent. We have no opposition, staff recommends approval. I think, uh, what got pulled off it was the correspondence from the city of Buckeye. And as I look at it, I think there was a bit of confusion there. Uh, Buckeye has, if you read their correspondence, has no concern with commercial uses. Their concern was that of outdoor, uh, storage uses. Um, to clarify, this zoning that we're asking for does not allow outdoor storage. We'd have to come back with either an SUP or a C three zoning. So that can occur with the present proposal today. Secondly, if we were to annex in Buckeye, uh, and enjoy the C two zoning in Buckeye, you need a conditional use from it. So we would still have to go through a process with them. So in those circumstances can outdoor storage occur, but for a, a future public hearing process, which would be the same thing where we're at today. To cut short briefly, we're at the corner of Major Artural Intersection, one mile away from I ten North, um, I ten freeway. To cut short briefly, we're at the corner of Major Artural Intersection, one mile away from I ten North, I ten Freeway, which makes perfect sense for a C two commercial use like this. And given that we have a church to north and a vacant parcel to the east, we're well buffered from any other sensitive uses. And for that, I want to be respectful for your time, so I'll finish my presentation unless you have any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Baugh. You win an award for being the fastest presenter today. Any, any questions for the applicant from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McGee, little bit of a rump rump. There was a, a comment by the city of Buckeye that I referenced in the Elliott Road project, but it was not this comment. So just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
I can address that. It is true that Buckeye intends to annex some adjacent roadway. And at that point, when we do a plan and development or apply for permits, we'll have to do the required infrastructure roadway improvements for it.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
No question here. Great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McGee. Thank you to the applicant. Any other questions for the applicant?
Commissioner Hernandez, I just, I just have a quick question. Do you guys have something planned for this? Or are you guys getting it rezoned to make it easier to annex to the city of Buckeye?
We don't have a development plan for this. Our hope is if you notice there's a vacant parcel to the east, we do not own that. But in theory, that would be a great assembly job for a more neighborhood scale commercial shopping center. So until that can come online, I think we'll just position us for the better opportunity. Hopefully, enjoy a conversation with the owner next door.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. Thank you to the applicant. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, we'll proceed. Are there any in-person speakers? I don't have any speaker cards, so I don't believe so. Is there anyone registered to speak online?
Chairman and members of the commission, I do not have any raised hands to speak on this case.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, then I believe we'll close the public forum for this. And the commission is welcome to discuss if anybody has anything to say about this. Need the commissioners?
I'm not seeing any, so this is Commissioner Hernandez and make a motion to approve case number Z, case number Z two zero two 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 zero six, to approve it with the conditions noted by staff.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Hernandez, a second by Commissioner Montoya. If we could have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Dan Zeison?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Limblom?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya? Commissioner Montoya?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
And Chairman Mitchell?
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Baugh. Thank you to staff and the commission for that. Do we have any other matters that need to be discussed by the staff?
Mr. Chairman, we'll be canceling the late March P and Z hearing.
Okay, so we, March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, planning zoning commission, I suppose, is hereby canceled. And if we don't have anything else, we will adjourn. We will adjourn at eleven twenty-four. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair?